Good evening. Good to see everyone. It's a pleasure to call this special call meeting of the mayor, the board of Alderman, for the city of Natchez to order. I'd like to ask everyone to please stand at this time. And I'm gonna put someone on the spot, but I know him very well, and I just spoke to him a little while ago, Joseph Smith. You think you're hiding back there, but I would like to ask you, if you would, to please open us with a word of prayer this evening, to be followed then by our pledge. You weren't expecting that, were you?
I was not. Let us pray. God of our weary years, God of our silent tears, God who has brought us thus far on the way, God who has, by thy might, led us into the light, keep us forever in your path. We pray. As we gather in these halls, God, these halls that were built by hands of men and women who did not experience the freedoms that we experience today, we want to give you thanks for the lives and the opportunities that you have afforded us to live.
Yes, Lord.
We thank you for the opportunity to gather into this space to do the work of moving this city forward, this city that has for centuries been led by men and women of all races, creeds, colors, and backgrounds. We pray that you would give us the strength and the wisdom and the knowledge and the courage and the tenacity to find your vision for Natchez and to move toward that vision, God. Each of us within our own lives have selfish ambitions, each of us within our own bank accounts need a certain dollar amount, but God, what we need in this moment tonight is your vision.
Yes, Lord.
We need your leadership, we need your guidance, we need your wisdom, we need your direction for the sake of this city now and in the future. We pray for every leader who sits on the dais.
Yes, Lord.
We pray that you would endow them with everything they need to make the right decisions tonight, and we pray for every man and woman who will mount this podium to give remarks. We pray for no hate, no evil, no malice. We pray for a peaceful meeting tonight.
Yes, Lord.
And we pray that at the end of this meeting that you will smile on what we have done and say, job well done. We thank you for the opportunity to do this work. We thank you for the reality that courage is not skipping a generation. We pray this prayer in the name of Jesus, but you will receive it simply as God.
Yes, Lord.
In your great name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Mr. Smith. Let us now join together in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. We'll ask the clerk to administer the roll call.
Alderwoman Hall.
Here.
Alderman Fraser.
Here.
Alderwoman Smith.
Here.
Alderwoman Irving.
Here.
Alderman Davis.
Alderman Maroney.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, all are present and accounted for with the exception of Alderman Davis.
All right. Thank you so much. We have, tonight is a special call meeting. We cannot consider but anything that's not on the agenda. However, according to the city attorney, we can take care of a simple ceremonial matter, and we're going to ask everyone, I know you're here for a public hearing that will commence in a moment, but I'd like to ask for your patience because we have three individuals that we are about to honor. And so, we're going to ask them to all come up, and I'm going to call these names out. First of all, we have Robert Kane. He is fire captain, and he has been with the city of Natchez for 34 years. And we are here to celebrate. And Captain Kane, we are, we, this is bittersweet for us, but we know is truly a special time for you. We're going to come around in just a moment to make this presentation to you, but please just remain standing there while we also ask Maddie Holmes Shropshire. Maddie, there you are. I was looking right, and there you are, right in front of us. Our senior program coordinator here with the city of Natchez, and we have enjoyed your service all these years to the city. Seventeen years of hard work and dedicated service, and we do want to honor you tonight, Ms. Shropshire. And also, we, we also have Mr. Charles Jones, Public Works Supervisor. Is Mr. Jones here? Mr. Jones has been with the city for nine years and is retiring, and we will make sure that Mr. Jones gets this. He just may have to come all the way up to City Hall for a special presentation there. But without any further ado, I'm going to ask the alderman and also the fire chief and others to join us as we make these presentations. My goodness, combined 34, somebody do that math for us, 34, 17.
Fifty-one.
We are losing 51 years of experience, and, but you know, what a great opportunity now for you. And so, I'd like for you to please, if you would, Ms. Shropshire, if you would come on this side, I just had to call you, Ms. Maddie. And you've done such a lot for us. It's definitely bittersweet. Sabrina Bartley just retired, and now you, and if you add up those years of service, it's even more, but we wish you all the best.
Thank you so much, sir.
We appreciate it.
I enjoy working.
Captain Kane, we have this for you, and my goodness, you've seen a lot, done a lot in those 34 years.
Yeah.
How's it feel to now be stepping, looking so young? Man, retirement's looking younger every day.
Every day.
But we wish you the best, and you obviously have a lot of support for those who work with you.
It's there. I promise you, it's there.
I'd like to invite the others to have a word if they would like to share anything.
Well, I would just like to simply say, I think you left the fire department when I left the police department.
I was.
So that, we go a long ways back, so I know.
Many times.
Many, many, many times. As I stated earlier, in one of the early periods of retirement, I don't really think the firemen get the praise that they deserve and the money that they deserve because, as I said, once the phone, on any given day, they say, well, we got the police, but on any given day when that fire alarm goes off, you got fireworks going on these cars, they start not to come back. They start to go, have to fall to a roof in a warehouse, they start to get rando with anything, or get electrocuted, trying to save somebody's dog, or something like that. But as I say, you dedicate yourself, like I said, many days I stopped by the station and we just talking stuff, so it's about time you go.
It is a joy, sir.
I just want to say it's been a joy working with you here with Natchez Transit. I've known her for many, many years, actually, we went to school together.
Yes.
And just another passion that she had to be able to help others, in particularly our seniors. And so, my hand goes off to you and your new endeavors, and I wish you much, much success.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Natchez Transit.
Okay, thank you for your service. Thank you for your service, absolutely.
Thank you all.
I wish you the best of luck. Every time I come to you, Stella, you give me the blues. We're really losing a lot of good employees, and like I said, I wish each and every one of you, on your endeavor in life, maybe, maybe you enjoy it because life is too short. It's very, very short, and I so enjoy it, sir.
Yes. I'm rolling, Smith.
Quickly, I want to say, of course, congratulations, Ms. Maddie.
Thank you.
Captain Kane was one of the ones that, when I needed an officer to step up, he was glad to step into a position to help me further our department. So, thank you for the work that you did. We are definitely gonna miss everything that comes with you and all of the knowledge and everything that you brought to the department. So, thank you so much for your service. We gonna miss you.
That's true.
I just want to thank you both for your service. We all know that you don't work for a municipality to get rich. It's not gonna happen. You do it because you care about the city you live in, and you care about the people that you serve, and basically, mission mark, and both, especially with the few jobs that you all do. You did mission mark every day, so thank you both, and happy retirement. That's one good thing, is retirement's not too bad, so enjoy that retirement. They worked hard for it, and bless you both. I appreciate that.
We'll ask, if we could, one of our clerks, our madam clerk or deputy, if you could come take a picture of us.
You got on your phone. Oh, thank you.
Where I can get all y'all?
I'm going to, actually, I'm gonna get to the side. In a second.
We did have a couple cases for you to present. I thank all of our men and women in uniform for all they do for us. At this time, at this time, we will have approval of minutes?
We have no minutes for approval, Mr. Mayor.
All right. We also have no visitors this evening on the agenda, so we will move right into our public hearing. At this time, I will entertain a motion to call to order our public hearing for the purpose of hearing an appeal of the Natchez Plan Commission decision to revoke the special exception for a bar nightclub, application PC 2309, 719 and 1/2 Franklin Street. Motion made by Alderwoman Hall.
Second.
Seconded by Alderwoman Irving. Discussion. We'll call the question. We'll proceed to a vote, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. At this time, it is, I understand the practice that the individuals making this appeal be allowed time for a representative of their choosing to address the board. Generally, about 10 minutes in nature, and then we have discussion, questions. That is what the attorney has advised me. Is there any disagreement to that among the members of the board?
Well.
Alderwoman Irving?
Thank you. I thought that it would be whereas, because based on the number of calls that I've received, conversations that I've had with the community, I feel that every individual should have the opportunity to come up and share their thoughts on this tonight in the public hearing, be able to do that, because that should be afforded to them. I know we had, we've had other hearings, however, this hearing is very important tonight.
Okay.
And so, we need to know, again, there were new members in the community reached out and said, I want to be able to get up and speak my piece.
Okay.
And I ask that we afford them that opportunity.
All right.
Thank you.
We would need to determine a time limit for those who are addressing the board outside of the appellant's and their legal counsel.
Five minutes. That's my suggestion.
Alderwoman Fraser, you're recognized.
What is the time limit that we give people generally, five minutes?
Generally, in public hearings, we give three minutes. When we have visitors addressing the board, we give five minutes. That's under the welcome visitor section, but generally, our public hearings have allowed three minutes per individual, and I would think if that's what we've been doing, that's what we should stick to.
That's correct.
Now, I think the actual appellant needs to have upwards of 10 minutes to make their remarks. I'm just looking around, is that understood, or?
I think every, yeah, I think each, the appellate, the people doing talk, I know you're gonna need about 10 minutes or more. Am I correct?
They can also have more when it comes to questioning and comments from the board.
I'd like to hear from the appellate, and I also, I would love to hear, like I said, each from each an individual. But five minutes, I think we, if you could do five minutes, if you could do five minutes, I think sometimes if we get too argumentative, we think we get too argumentative, we'll cut it off at three.
Three is the general rule we've been doing. If we're going to go to five, could we have a show of hands, those who intend to speak? Because we are mindful of the clock here. We have one, two, three, four. Am I missing one behind the?
Yes, someone here. Seven.
So, we have a total of seven.
Ten.
Ten, that would be 50 minutes, I think, three, if we went five, I think we better than, with that many, stick to three minutes. And that applies to everyone, whether you're here to vote for or against, it doesn't matter. We want to be fair and consistent, but three minutes has been our rule in other public hearings, and, you know, now, if y'all want to vote on that, we can entertain a motion to vote on it.
We can, I mean, we can vote on it because it's.
That's right. I'll entertain a motion, the, setting the time limit.
Two, three. I'll make a motion, set three, except for the representatives.
Okay. Alderwoman Smith has made that motion, seconded by Alderman Maroney.
With the exception of the representatives.
That's right.
Okay.
We'll call for the question. We'll proceed to a vote, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
Are you?
Motion carries.
I'm bothered with the question that you raised at the end of the coming.
Certainly, certainly. We now will recognize a spokesperson for the individuals making this appeal.
Hold on, Mr. Mayor, before we get started.
Yes, sir, Alderman Fraser.
Before we get started, before we get started, I need some clarification, Mr. Attorney.
Okay.
From my recollection, from my understanding, and if I'm not mistaken, is the mayor involved in a lawsuit, should he be, should he recuse himself from this meeting or what? From this hearing?
I've not had a chance to research the issue. He's a defendant in the lawsuit.
Involved in Truth Lounge, okay? So, my question is, should he recuse himself from this meeting because he's involved in a lawsuit?
In my opinion, no.
Okay, that's your opinion. Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Alderman Fraser. We will now invite counsel for the Truth Lounge.
My question, we don't have the public comment section.
Oh, certainly. Would you like for us to entertain public comments in the very beginning? We can certainly do that. At this time, then, we will open the floor for public comments.
I would just like to ask, there is a sign-in sheet. I need anyone speaking to please sign in with their name and address for the minutes.
Okay, thank you so much. There is a sign-in sheet at the podium. As you speak, please sign in and also identify yourself, name and address for purposes, and we will start the clock. Madam clerk, if you would, please keep up with the time for us.
I will.
And we will start the time after they make their introduction of name and address.
Good evening. My name is Lee Ford. I'm a native Natchezian. Recognizing the board, thank you all, and those of you who have gathered here for such a timely occasion, I would like to add.
And Mr. Ford, your address, please.
77 Sergeant Prentice Drive, Natchez, Mississippi. Okay, also, I would like to recognize, I've been a lifelong native of Natchez, and in the downtown area, Natchez has always had a downtown business. Back in the day, the main street side in front of Eel Hotel was basically for your white bars, and on the front street side in 200 block for your black bars. It has always been noise down there. If you go to New Orleans in that area, there are clubs and hotels everywhere, and we are considered a resort area. With that being said, I'm a retired police officer, and I retire from the city of Natchez in the state of Louisiana as a law enforcement officer. I'm saying whatever happens inside of the Truth Lounge, that's on the Truth Lounge, but once you step out to the street, that's on the city officials, that's on the police. And being a police officer myself, with a lot of retired police officers, a lot of law men here, whatever you come on that public street, you become the cities that you saw everybody in for. So, I can only think, when I found this on one incident that took place in the Truth Lounge, and, and that last person, she testified that it was null and void. However, this place has been charged with several things that they had nothing to do with. So, at the end of the day, we put the blame where the blame supposed to be. It should be the quality of law enforcement. We try to provide and violence conducive for everybody. So, when I'm saying this, say that, if a police officer see people on the street, move them on. If not, we have laws in place that would justify the clearing of a street corner, and this last shooting that's queued up, that was a few blocks away. So, I'm simply saying, let's be fair, we want our businesses, these are good people, I respect everyone on this board, you know, so please, let's think right and do the right thing, because these people are not guilty of nothing other than trying to be good businessmen. So, let's keep that in mind. Thank you very much, and God bless everybody here.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Next.
Good afternoon. My name is Levada Hill. I came to.
And your address?
I'm sorry, 121 Monmouth Street, Natchez, Mississippi, 3912.
Thank you.
Sign in.
Oh, okay. I came to Natchez in 1969, and when I came to Natchez, the 700 block of Franklin Street and MLK was basically a business district. and MLK was basically a business district. You had black nightclub there, you had ice cap companies, Fletcher's Cafe, The Voice, Club Delisa, these were black businesses that black citizens thrived in. Now what's happening now, it seems like we're all trying to be painted in one certain way for the city to all look the same direction. Okay, I understand that tourists come here and tourists have to be satisfied, but basically the way I look at it is, we've had clubs downtown when I was young and still going to clubs like Dimples, Doc Big Loves, I've seen people get to fighting, break bottles over each other's heads. My best friend got married, went under the hill to the saloon for after party, uh, uh, two guys got to fighting, somebody got stabbed, uh, ambulances were called, but they, they weren't close. So the thing is, you're trying to paint the Truth Lounge into a certain picture of a certain type of behavior that doesn't happen anywhere else. This is not true. When I was doing Uber, when I was doing DoorDash, I would go down the streets at night, police cars would be in front of Andrew's Tavern. So basically, I'm asking the board to please be, um, fair with the individuals that are coming here before you because this is a business district, open container law, and there have been a couple of incidents, but you take, you're taking away a part of our black businesses downtown and we've had a lot of trouble with black businesses getting a foothold in Natchez from the impact of people coming before the board, the crisis center for the black kids in crisis, uh, the general hospital being torn down. Now Joseph Smith is having trouble with the paint after he asked the board for a solid year. I'm not saying we're being targeted, but I'm saying our business, for our businesses to thrive, it seems like we're having a hard time getting a foothold to having businesses that operate satisfably here in Natchez. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next. Individuals wishing to address the board.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is W.C. Curtis. I live at 38 South Wind Road, Natchez, Mississippi. I'm a retiree from Chicago. And, uh, I'm, I'm here to support Truth Lounge, uh, even although I run Club Paradise, uh, I still believe that, I've been knowing these two gentlemen for a long time, they're good upstanding guys, they're good businessmen, they pay their taxes and stuff. And running a nightclub is not an easy thing. There's so many variables that can happen, so many things that can go wrong and a lot of it is beyond their control and things that, you know, they can't do anything about at the time. But, you know, to follow up and all that stuff is a good thing. So my own personal opinion, I support and ask the board to really give it some serious thought. You know, mistakes happen, you know, when they, when they came to you and gave you their objectives and goals for opening up the club, the city agreed to it and, you know, all I say is, if they do the things that they were supposed to do in the beginning, give them another chance. Things happen. And, and I, I'm, I'm not, uh, representing all of the bars, I represent W.C. Curtis, my personal opinion, and I respectfully ask the board, give the gentleman a chance. Business is tough nowadays, we're all in survival mode.
Absolutely.
And we're just asking, you know, give them a chance, you know, fix the things that you think is broken and work from there. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis, thank you. Uh, next, those wanting to speak.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jack Blaney, I live at 658 Liberty Road. And I, I too come here to address this issue because I think Truth Lounge has been treated unfairly in all this. Um, I did spend my time and my money, um, I saw a lot of activity on Facebook involving what was going on with this Truth Lounge deal. So I like to know. So I went and requested records, uh, Mr. Lazarus knows about it, I've got, uh, email where he was aware of me requesting these records. And, uh, just for, uh, argument's sake, I requested the 911 calls for four different places in Natchez, four different Natchez businesses. And these, this is what I found, this is what I was given by the city. For Walmart, there were 73 911 calls between April 1st, 2023, and March 31st, 2024. There were 73 911 calls. All right, not to mention, you know, they have the homeless people living next door and all that, you know? I haven't heard anybody call for Walmart to be shut down. All right, Merritt Hospital, prominent business in that, y'all agree?
Agreed.
There were 29 911 calls at Merritt Hospital in that same time period. Magnolia Bluffs Casino, in that same time period, there were 26 911 calls. Okay? And I do have the list of the charges that people were arrested for on all these calls with me, if you would care to see them.
No, I forgot.
Okay? Truth Lounge, in that same time period, there was five calls, five 911 calls. And this is the only business that has been shut down. All right, and y'all claim it's for the safety of Natchez? How is that right? I agree with Mr. Ford.
Yes.
Once you leave the sidewalk, which was part of the agreement at the circuit, that the circuit judge signed, they were supposed to provide security on the sidewalk in front of the bar. That was the total of the agreement that the, uh, circuit judge signed. Once you leave that sidewalk, if somebody breaks the law, somebody's loitering, fighting, whatever they do, that's a law enforcement issue, that's not on Truth Lounge, that's not their security. You can ask Mr. Travis over here, I actually suggested starting a militia at one time. It would take a militia group to patrol the entire downtown Natchez. You know, I've looked at this from the front of the bar over here, you know, there was a shooting, it was all in the paper, Peter Renaldi blew it all out of proportion, but it happened on Martin Luther King Street toward Main Street, not even down by Franklin Street. There is no way somebody could fire a bullet from Truth Lounge into the fire department and Heathley's or the Goodyear Building. It, it's not possible, physics deny the ability for that to happen. It wasn't even on Franklin Street where Truth Lounge is. I mean, I think this whole thing has been blown out of proportion or there's some hidden agenda behind it because, I mean, this is just unfair and tonight is y'all's chance to correct this issue.
That's right.
You know, this has gone too far, the propaganda behind it has gotten outrageous and this is y'all's chance tonight to fix this. Here's the record, this was provided by you.
Time has expired.
Do you want?
It is a signed up. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Blaney.
And Rod's Grill and Chill, and we are a restaurant bar grill scheduled to open up July the 12th, 2024, you all are invited to come on out. Uh, but the concern is prior to us even being open, we were still catering out of this space, we had the police called on us for simply sitting outside about, um, four times from the neighbor up on the corner, I think, Mr. Mayor, I even told you about that. And the police came all of those times to see what was going on and nothing was going on. Uh, I think we've had situations to where police resources have been misused inappropriately and now we've kind of developed a culture where it's not a sense of urgency for things that really and truly should matter. And so therefore I would like to see some comprehensive plan for new businesses and ongoing businesses open to, with the police department as well as businesses so that we can have a comprehensive plan to where we all can be truly one Natchez and be one village. Uh, I've been to Washington DC this week, California, I've been traveling all over the world and all I talk about is Natchez, but I want Natchez and I'm telling everybody to come to Natchez, but we need things for people to do when they come to Natchez.
Absolutely.
And we need something for people of all, uh, race, creed and color to do when they come to Natchez because we truly should be one Natchez and I would like to see that happen. So I would like to, uh, see or ask that you maybe schedule a comprehensive meeting that we can have with the police department as well as downtown business owners so that we can be all on one page and we can all follow the same rules. I, I've known these gentlemen for a while and I don't think that they will want to be people who want to break the law. Uh, but again, as a new business owner, somebody who is opening a business there, uh, I don't want to be in fear of that if we are having a celebration that we may be next. So, uh, therefore again, like I said, uh, I support of them and will hope that we can come to some comprehensive plan so that we all can, uh, make it and live here in the city of Natchez, what we call home. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fraser King. Uh, next. Do we have anyone else wanting to speak? Okay.
Joseph, uh, my name is Joseph Smith, um, 800 MLK Street, uh, to the mayor, uh, the board of, um, Alderman. Um, first, let me just say thank you guys for the work that you do on behalf of the city, it's thankless work. Um, somebody has to sit through these long meetings and listen to complaint after complaint and, um, none of us out here really want to do that, so we thank you for your service to this community. Um, I, I, I want to say that as you consider the vote that you will make tonight, um, I, I want you to remember this article that Jan Griffey posted in the Democrat about two years ago, um, where this young woman hung herself in a closet, she was 21, she hung herself with a belt in her closet, um, over in Cloverdale and people in this room, law enforcement community, um, were over there trying to minister to the kids in that community. And we, as an organization, blacknatches.org, held this block party where people came and sang and spoke just to kind of spread light into the community. Um, that's part of what Ricky and Heywood are doing. Um, Truth Lounge is kind of like a haven for young people who have nowhere else to go. When nothing else is open and there's nobody else to talk to and there's no other sense of community here, Truth Lounge is that for young people and old people, much like bars have been for many of the people in this community. Um, I know you think that it, it, it's probably just something that young people are doing, acting crazy, but, um, people only can do as well as they know to do and not everybody has had the same level of training, home training as others, right? And so I think it is, it is, it is responsible for us as a community to think about that as we make this decision regarding this business because they can't be held responsible for the actions of other adults, right? Now they took responsibility while they were within their walls, right? But imagine having the responsibility of knowing exactly what every adult person who comes into your business, whether it's a laundromat or a grocery store, imagine bearing the responsibility for each person that walks in once they walk out of your establishment. That's unfair to one business owner. I would like to echo the words of Ms. Fraser King and, um, suggest to the board that we establish a healthy nightlife coalition, a coalition that is designed to address the needs and concerns of nightlife, right? There are 30 colleges and universities within a 100 mile radius of Natchez. Nightlife could be a huge economic driver, but we've got to have a strong plan for dealing with nightlife. Here is an opportunity to do that, to get together with law enforcement officials from the sheriff's department, the police department, from Vidalia, from the state highway patrol and police, from business owners and stakeholders and have them meet, have us meet on a regular basis, monthly, quarterly, and decide what we can do as a community to develop a strong and robust nightlife. I would also like to say this, also echoing the words of Ms. Fraser, okay? I've been down in the triangle, working to revitalize that area, uh, for about three years now. And I have personally experienced the weaponizing of the law enforcement community against the businesses in the triangle. Whether we have a noise ordinance or not, the police are coming. If we are painting, if we are scraping paint, if we are, it doesn't matter what we're doing, somebody is calling the police to report what happens down there. And I want to make sure that as a community, we are, we are, we are engaging the law enforcement in a way that is fair, in a way that is equitable and in a way that doesn't feel like we have been that black people are being terrorized. This is not a white and black issue. What we see in this community is that this entire community, white and black, is ready for progress and we hope that this board tonight will make a vote for progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you, Mr. Smith. I do want to remind everyone, we have a three minute time limit.
I'm sorry.
Um, thank you. We, uh, do have others, I understand, who wish to speak, do we have?
Which ones?
Others?
Hello, my name is Richard Brangian, I own several properties right across the street from the Truth Lounge, including three B and Bs.
And your address is?
Oh, I'm, own 712 to 722 Franklin Street, it's four properties and five lots. Um, I've had many meetings with Ricky and David, um, Heywood. Um, we've tried to work with them, we supported them when they first opened. Um, we were happy to see the building painted and they painted their neighbor's building as well at Love City Post. Um, from the day one they opened, they were very, very loud. We have been across the street from other bars, other black owned businesses for, I've been in business there 37 years. I have lived in that block for 32 years. We have had several bars that have come and gone, we've had Bobby J's that have been there, used to be the Ambassador's Lounge, um, been across the river and I think, I mean, across the street from Bobby J's. I think he's been there well over 20 years, but it was the Ambassador's Lounge before, I don't know the exact time it became Bobby J's. We have no problem with Bobby J, Bobby J even wrote a letter to the planning commission that he was not in favor of them, they had violated the, um, special exemption. They are a nuisance in noise, in the people on the street. Six out of the seven special exemption rules that they agreed to abide by, they have violated. They have been asked to do better, they've said they would do better and it has not been better. They will be better for once or twice, but they were in front of the planning commission at a meeting and almost the next time they opened, they had the incidents on Easter weekend. Um, it should concern everyone what is going on. I understand that things are not happening directly in front of the Truth Lounge and that is true, but when the Truth Lounge is not open, the, that part of downtown Natchez is very quiet. It's only when the Truth Lounge is open, there's a problem. And if you don't see a correlation between the two, there's, I, I don't know what else. When there are people parked everywhere, there's people in the street, Truth Lounge not open, you can hear a pin drop at 3:00 AM in the morning. When the Truth Lounge is open, you can't hear yourself think. We have added $600 worth of sound edding to our B and Bs, it's made no difference. We've given people earplugs now, we've had numerous complaints, we've had a number of people who've tried to call the police department at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning to complain and they get no answer. The police chief says, I have to tell my guests when they check in, they have to phone 911. I don't know how many of the calls that were recorded were from my guests, but I'm sure some, I know I have people who've said they have called 911 on the Truth Lounge. Um, I have only called 911 once and I don't think that's recorded in this thing, when someone reversed through my building at. through my building at 1:00 in the morning, I called the Truth Lounge and I called 911. And that's the only time I've called 911, and they took a while to come. But it's been a problem. And I support the bar. I support the bar scene. I would like nightlife. I just, it's just a problem.
Thank you, Mr. Brangian. Thank you. Are there others who wish to speak this evening? Yes, yes, certainly. Ms. Maddie.
My name is Brett Heinz. I live at 612 State Street down in Natchez. Mr. Mayor and Board of Aldermen, I would just, I have been before, got the committee before with Truth Lounge. I've been to all their hearings and meetings here, and I just feel like so many here that they are being targeted. I just, I'm from a big city in Utah. We've lived in Natchez for a couple of years now and love the city of Natchez. But I think Natchez has the possibility to have a great nightlife. You walk down, I walk my dogs every night, and by 7:00 o'clock at night, Natchez is closed down. What do the tourists do when they're trying to find a business to go to and support? I think these two gentlemen are business professionals. I admire them. I think they are a startup for that whole block and the whole area. I admire them for what they've done to their business, and I know that it would be a starting point as well as what the Smiths are trying to do on MLK. I encourage all of that, and I love what I'm seeing happen, happening. But I'm, like I say, I just feel we need to give them another chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Are there any others who wish to speak? In that event, we will now, we will now hear from the individuals making the appeal, and I would assume that would be their legal counsel.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you all for the opportunity to be before you this evening and for listening to the public speak. I hope you received the information, one, our petition for appeal, two, the information we submitted in support of it. I think what's important-
Mr. Graves, if you would introduce yourself to the board.
Forgive me. I'm Jeffrey Graves. I've represented these guys since about, what, October now, in all of these issues before the city. And I'm from Jackson with the Cochrane Firm, and I will be speaking on their behalf tonight, at least to represent the petition for appeal. If they may speak, they may not. I've had the pleasure of representing them throughout this process. It's been an interesting process to watch, mainly because they were given the right to be where they are by unanimous vote, under the same criteria for which they now have been deprived of that opportunity. Our appeal, by your ordinance, is limited to certain factors. It says, "In consideration of the appeal, the board makes it all application material submitted by applicants and considered by the planning commission for special exception approval. The general purpose and standards set forth in the ordinance, the planning commission decision rendered rescinding the special exception approval use. Any additional standards set forth in the ordinance, and all evidence and testimony received by the commission at their April 25th public hearing. What we ask of you is to review their decision, reconsider it, namely reverse it because of the lack of fair process at that level. I will not go through the procedural background, but I will go to your authority, which is that the applicant's petition to Board of Aldermen to reconsider and reverse the commission's decision on the grounds that the planning commission aired in the application and interpretation of the terms of the development code of the city of Natchez regarding special exception uses and related ordinance and policies adopted by the city. The development review procedures in the city of Natchez's development code sets forth the criteria they're supposed to be reviewed under, that they're supposed to, whether that's for approval, the initial approval, or review. When they first applied, they were unanimously approved. I think back in October when we met, they were cited for an incident that happened. They faced it, had a meeting with the city, law enforcement personnel, mayor, immediately upon being notified that there were concerns about safety. They left that meeting with the blessings of the city to continue business, having enforced, or at least collaborated, to develop a security plan. I think one of the more important purposes of the ordinance is specific to the reasons they've been, their approval has been rescinded, is public health, safety. Ironically, these guys employ deputized, off-duty law enforcement personnel and security every time they're open. Is it five, six, you have on duty? Every time they're open, they provide security for the surrounding area. The commission charged them with an incident that didn't happen on their premises, happened somewhere near Truth Lounge. Most important, Truth Lounge wasn't even open when this happened. When asked why they were before the planning commission for review, the seven criteria under the city's ordinance were read as reasons for review, and the criteria they need to meet, or that they had been cited with violation of it. The planning commission was pretty vague on what they were actually in violation of. I think they may have, I'm sure they're in the minute somewhere, it's another issue. But one being public health and safety, another being depreciation of value of surrounding properties. No proof that anybody's property is worth less than what it was before they opened. I think somebody earlier mentioned the vacancies on Franklin Street, which goes to another purpose of an ordinance, master plan, actually. Downtown master plan speaks to the purpose. Plan purpose. The purpose of this plan is to provide Natchez with the blueprint for revitalizing the historic downtown. Because downtown Natchez is a complex and multifaceted place requiring an equally complex and multifaceted solution. This plan is holistic in that it will not focus on any one specific aspect of the study area, but rather it consider in a comprehensive manner, physical, economic, and social. Master plan, I think I've heard people mention, some parts of downtown are dead at night, some are not. Interestingly, in the master plan, it, two downtowns is what it calls it. As many downtown merchants are quick to point out, downtown Natchez has essentially two downtowns. First on this list, Franklin Street. Forty-eight percent of space is vacant. Twenty-four percent of space is for furniture and antique stores. Relative to Main Street, the rents are lower, and the building conditions tend to be poor. I don't know exactly when this master plan was adopted. It says May 18, 2018, which precedes their existence there, representing that the property value was low at the time. Public policies in the master plan. Public policies related to the land use and development are important tools for implementing a downtown master plan. Because the historic district overlay zoning controls all facets of development related to physical form and design, the key issue for downtown related to existing zoning is permitted uses. Commercial uses only references bars and nightclubs. These uses are completely prohibited in B2 HD, B3 HD zones, but should be permitted as a right in B3 HD district as a special exception in the B2 HD district. These guys followed the process in seeking approval to open, I think they actually submitted as a bar and lounge. I think the commission, but through the application, needed to classify it a different way, and the word nightclub joined bar, lounge went away. Again, I think it's important to note that unanimous approval was granted initially. In October 19, went back on the issue of, I guess, another citation, closed down. A judge issued an order. She's executed an order as these guys and the city attorney at the time, on behalf of the city, agreed to allow them to reopen under limited conditions, something that the ordinance allows the planning commission to do upon review. Twice reviewed by the planning commission, neither time they've been before either commission have conditions been placed on the approval. Instead, they've been told they complied. They've been told they complied again, only to be shut down the one time being cited for an incident that didn't happen on the premises and during a time where they were closed for business. I hope that you all consider your role as a review board for the planning commission. These guys have done everything by your ordinances, somehow not receiving fair process under the issues raised or the concerns addressed by the ordinances. I ask that you take a look at each one of your master plan, development code, and the entire city code of ordinances, which I think, for the record, one more we should point out.
Mr. Graves, we are over time, but we are allowing you, you know, a little longer, but we do need to-
I'll be a couple minutes. Thank you. Purpose of the development code. I'll just reference it as relevant instead of leaving it to you. I just hope you guys consider the things that the city has represented is important. And I'll leave with this. Actually, I was in trying to keep up with this ordinance that moves. First thing I saw today on the website, "Celebrating a New Era in Natchez. For over 300 years, this jewel of the Mississippi, the oldest city, perched on the highest bluff on the great river, has been welcoming visitors from all over the world. We pay tribute to all who have come before us, the native Natchez, from whom we derive our name, the French who settled here in 1716, the English, the Spanish, the American, and the African. Truly, all have helped shape the city we know and love. Today, we celebrate a new era in Natchez as a breed of Natchusians descend upon our city in impressive numbers. All of them excited to call this their new home. We celebrate a time of diversity, renewal, and hope. Unity, the core word in community and opportunity, has become our hallmark. Our great history continues. Now in our fourth century as a city, and we look to a promising and brilliant future. Thank you for the honor of serving you as mayor, Dan M. Gibson." Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Alderman Fraser, you're recognized.
Thank you, sir. Let me, first of all, say this. Natchez, Mississippi, as a gentleman stated, the oldest settlement on the Mississippi River. Our charter, our charter, and from state on down to justice, Natchez is considered as a tourist town, and therefore being considered town, being a tourist town. In my time, in my time on the police department, we had bar rooms stay open all night, all the way from Franklin Street, Main Street, 200 block of Martin Luther King, all the way out to St. Catherine Street. We had bar rooms open all night. And that is, that is our, I would say, meat and potatoes. Because like I say, we're tourists, and everyone sitting on this board, they know that. When you start talking about tourists, that is our main attraction in Adams County. It's tourism. And I want to say this too. These gentlemen, before they opened up their club, they had a soft opening. They invited area elected officials to come to this soft opening, from jurors, clergyman, Aldermen, whatever, they came. And we was happy to embrace them as a new business within the city of Natchez. Now we are coming to this point. My concern is that with the commission, with the commission and crime, I understand about the crime and I think, the authority to close these peoples down. I really couldn't get that, but why they was closed down. And then for the period of time that they have been closed down, from my understanding, from my understanding, being on this board, the commission do not have the authority to close the bar rooms down. They had to come before the Board of Aldermen. And from my understanding, and nothing came to me, and I don't know nothing about none of it, but like I say, we are, to me, I can't speak for the rest of the board, remember, I can only speak for Alderman Fraser and the people's award too. we are, to me, I can't speak for the rest of the board, remember, I can only speak for Alderman Fraser and the people's award too. We are doing these people the grave disservice by keeping them, them, uh, uh, keeping them closed down. And, and as a couple people stated, we don't want to get into the racial aspects of this because we don't want to say, well, you letting them do this on the white side of town, you letting them do this on the black side. See, we don't need to go there. Because diversity is the number one thing here. No city is going to survive without diversity. We got to have everyone included in processing of what goes on in the city of Natchez. Just one group of people. And talking to my constituents, a lot of them feel that we are, we are doing these gentlemen a wrong deed, but like say, we, we gonna have to get together, get out here together and do something. And I heard some great ideas that came from some people that came up here. And we need to work together and start doing a lot of things. And like say, Mr. Mayor, uh, me like personally, uh, uh, I, I think, and I could be wrong, and I should get some heat from this, but I think the commission did them a, a greater service because some of the people on the commission, and I'm not going to call their name, had problems with other citizens. And on the planning commission, I'm not going to call their name, because one gentleman, he, he just, he just felt that everything is going wrong. But I think as a board, and, and Mr. Branson, and I respect, I respect you, sir, too, what you, like I said, you got a business, a, a B and B up there, and you, and like I say, you're contributing to the community too, because you own up your business. But I don't know why, when they sold you the business that they didn't tell you that it was tourist town and, and anything so to happen in that block. That block up there, as I stated earlier, uh, always been nightlife. You had, on one side of the street, you had bar rooms, on the other side, you had H L Burns, French Company, a long time ago. You had all kinds of stuff. Then you come around to two hundred block, the two hundred block of Martin Luther, of Martin Luther King, it was no opinion. It stayed open all night. Everybody in there was being something. They had cab companies, they had barber shops, they had everything in that block. You come around to five hundred, I mean, number five St. Catherine Street, it was the same, you had Don Barber Shop, you had shoe shop, you had bitters, everything on. So, uh, we are in the process of now, uh, we're in the process now, we're trying to revitalize that area, uh, Ms., uh, Ms. Sheldon Doyle over there. And we are, we're trying to do something with that area. And, and we're like says, we're not trying to run anybody out of business. We're trying to bring business into the net. That's not what we are here for. And I say to anybody, me sitting on this board, me personally on this board, if it's not good for the, good for the people of Natchez, it's not going to happen. I'm not going to go along with it. I just don't go along with no anything. If it's not right, I'm not going along with it. So that's just me, Mr. Mayor. And I, I think I don't know how the rest of the board members don't vote, but I think we should do the right thing by truth now.
Thank you. Alderman, and Alderwoman, generally has been our practice when we conclude the public hearing to go back to regular meeting for further discussion than the action that the board has to take. I would like to see, is there any further public comment before we adjourn the public hearing and return to our regular meeting?
Yeah, you have one hand up.
We have one? Okay. All right.
She's coming around.
Okay. All right. Thank you. If you will, please sign in and then set your name and address for us. And you have three minutes.
Good afternoon, board. Uh, I did not intend to speak. I got my attire, I wasn't planning on coming in.
And your name and address.
Campbell, and I live at one twenty-two Mansfield Drive. And I would just like to say one simple thing, let's call a spade a spade. When I was coming up and I was a teenager, we used to travel all up and down the roads and highways and byways and nightclubs. And it was a lot of shooting, killing. Well, not killing, but you know, knife throws and all kinds of things. Nobody was shut down. I come downtown and I ride through downtown some evenings. And I see people coming out on Main Street drunk, come across the street falling out drunk. But nobody's calling the cops for them. Nobody's going down their business. So like I said, there must be a hidden agenda here. And it's not on my side of the road. So I think that we should call a spade a spade and give truth their legal right and their legal opportunity to stay in business. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Any further?
Mr. Mayor, these, these letters of support were submitted. I don't know if they'll be read, but I do believe these people
Okay.
would represent the public. And if I, I can read them, but I'd like to have them read.
You know, we have been here, we've heard your argument. We have been here a while. I think we're about ready to bring this to a discussion with the board, Mr. Graves. But if you'd like to present those to the clerk, you're more than welcome.
Well, I, I think, I think we should. I mean, it's just, I'm, I'm asking because I think these people are, would also be making public comment, and I think the ordinance allows those letters and support.
Certainly. We have, we have others, we have not read them. But they certainly can be made a part of the record. I wish you would include those during your ten minutes, however, Mr. Graves, we do need to. We have a, a lady here wanting to speak. If you'd like to, how many do you have there?
I can just read a couple of them.
Okay.
Letter, support for Truth Lounge. This letter is in support of reaffirming Truth Lounge's right to operate and do business in Natchez historic district. We fully support Ricky and Haywood's commitment to providing safe and reasonable nightlife entertainment with the cooperation and support of our excellent law enforcement. We welcome the opportunity to meet with local business owners and law enforcement to determine a plan for safety and know that city leaders will do all it can to help us grow in Natchez. Respectfully, John Norris, Crooked Letter Picture Company, Natchez, Mississippi. This letter is in support of reaffirming Truth Lounge's right to operate and do business in Natchez historic district. We fully support Ricky and Haywood's commitment to providing safe and reasonable nightlife entertainment. As a neighboring business owner, we believe that policing the streets is police responsibility and no, no one business owner should be held responsible for the actions of his patrons once they leave the establishment. We as a community welcome the opportunity to meet regularly with other business owners and law enforcement to determine a solid plan for nightlife safety and hope that city leaders will do all it can to help us grow nightlife in Natchez. Chaneria Miller, local business owner. Other names, Dr. Augustus Smith, owner of Busy Being Amazing. Sergeant Anita Smith, owner of Doll Babies Praise and Dance Hall. Royal Hill Junior and Lavanda Hill, owners of Open Arms Tours. Mrs. Latrice Esther Smith. Joseph A. C. Smith, founder of BlackNatchez.org. Adriana Ware, concerned native of Natchez. Tyler Brock.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Thank you. You may obviously give those to the clerk if you would like to. Or to the attorney.
I'm Mildred Chapman, and I live here in Natchez, and I was on the planning commission. And I came here tonight so I could hear everything that was being said. And the only thing I want to say, and I made a suggestion back then, I'm looking and I'm seeing all these police officers coming here, and this is a public hearing for citizens that votes. And this really got me angry, that's why I got up. Cause when they called, they don't get to respond. And that is what happened. Natchez, we still got to put signs out there in front of the police station. So it seemed like to me, our problem is overall us and everyone and just need to get things in order, because this is just going too far. It's insulting to me to look here. Here I am, a voter. And every time I turn around, I'm seeing a policeman come up. And, and it hurts. We need to stop it. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Ms. Chapman. Do we have any other, other public comments? Yes. We'll, uh, we'll, we'll let this be the last one, and then we'll, we'll be going back to our regular meeting.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Board of Aldermen and Mayor. I just, my name is Jacqueline Marso, and I live at three seventeen Dumas Drive. I only got up to ask, anybody in this room was aware of the big fight on at Andrews? Well, if y'all haven't, let me tell you about it. They tore up the street. They hit each other with beer bottles. Police didn't even come. More or less shut them down. So what's the difference? It seems like a black and white issue. So that's all I got up to say. The difference of how y'all treating these establishments. And I respect these two young men, and I know they trying to do the right thing. I've been in their establishment, establishment before. And I'm asking this board to give them another chance. Thank you. That's all I want to say.
At this time, I'll entertain the motion to adjourn the public hearing and return to our regular meeting.
So move.
Motion made by Alderwoman Irving, seconded by Alderman Fraser. Discussion. We'll call for the question. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. We are now in our regular meeting discussion.
Yes.
Yes.
Um, thank you. I just want to piggyback on Mr. Joseph Smith and Mrs. Dorita Joseph Smith and Mrs. Dorita Fraser King. I want to piggyback on their conversation. They said some key things. One was diversity, equity, and inclusion. That has to happen. That has to continue to happen. The other, we need to meet. People need to come together to meet so they can share ideas. So we can discuss what's best practices. Hotel owners, the Airbnb's, B and Bs, all businesses downtown. You develop those relationships, where we begin to what? Form their partnership, where we look out for one another. We know the old cliche saying, I am my brother's keeper. Well, that's what we should be. When something goes wrong, all of us hurt. No one sitting in this room want to have the experience of gunfire anywhere in Natchez. Absolutely nowhere. Safety is the most important thing that stabilize a community. Not only for us as residents that live here, but for any tourists that want to come to Natchez. They want to know it's a safe place to come to. And we are a safe space. We have been that way for a very, very long time. We are making progress with moving this city forward. We are making progress with moving this city forward. And so I'm asking this board to do the right thing. And that is, let's make this vote tonight. And I will begin by making the motion now. I make a motion that we reopen, reverse the decision that the planning commission has made at this time.
Sir.
Thank you.
A motion made by Alderwoman Irving and seconded by Alderman Fraser. Discussion.
Yes.
I have one more, Fraser. Anybody else? Anybody else? Why, why go?
Alderman Fraser, you have it for.
I just want to say this. Uh, I'm sitting here looking at one of these reports that was made. It said, and I think it came from the police department somewhere. It says, since the judge order was lifted on one business owner, it's the seven hundred block of Franklin Street, say that the owner has hired someone to pick up the trash in the morning after the bar has been open and the volume of music has been lowered and is only heard occasionally. Then it go on down and say, Police Chief Cal Green stated, there has only been one incident since the judge order was lifted in November. The incident occurred on Saturday night, February the third. An individual bagged into the building across the street from Truth Lounge. It was unclear if the person had been in the bar prior to bagging into the building or this occasion while trying to parallel park. The individual was seen going into the bar after parking, that would say now, in short time exit the bar, get into a car and leave. Now, is my understanding from, from, from talking to, uh, did that, that individual that bagged into the building, did, did he pay, pay for bagging into that building? Did he, did he pay for bagging that building?
Yes.
Okay, so he got paid for bagging into the building. I, I, you know, for, you know, just reading this, uh, he bagged into the building, if he was drunk or anything, like they should have took him to jail. Or the police should have took him to jail, some of you bagged into the building. But the owner of the building got paid. So I, I, to me, it was like everybody is trying to do the right thing up there.
Alderwoman Hall?
I would like to get to Mr. Attorney, please.
Okay. Mr. Attorney, do you have any information to share regarding the issue at hand?
I do. First of all, it's clear from the statute that the planning commission does not have the authority to close anybody down. And Mr. Fraser is correct. And of course, uh, what the planning commission did was revoke a special exception. The special exception was granted. And based on another public hearing that was done in the planning commission, the planning commission revoked the special exception. That was based, as Mr. Graves pointed out, on the seven criteria that are listed in the development code. I don't want to bore you with a lot of statutory details, but I do want to hit the high parts. Public health and safety. Whether the business provides an essential service to the community. Whether the proposed business will injure the value of adjoining or neighboring properties. Whether the proposed use is in harmony with the scale, bulk, density, and character of the neighborhood. Whether the proposed use will conform to the comprehensive plan, Mr. Graves addressed that. Whether the proposed use is appropriately located with respect to other facilities. And whether the proposed use will cause an undue traffic congestion or create a traffic hazard. Based on those seven considerations is what the planning commission considered and was charged with when they made their decision. This public hearing tonight is for the purpose of reviewing de novo or anew that decision. The board is now charged with making the decision whether or not to grant, extend, or revoke the special exception.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lazarus. Further discussion?
Mr. Attorney.
Yes, Alderman Fraser.
You said something about traffic, right?
The statute says that, right.
The statute said, but it also been established that there that whatever happened outside in traffic, Truth Lounge did not have anything to do with the traffic outside the building. Am I correct?
That's to be determined by the board, not by me.
Okay, but listen, uh, uh, okay. Now, from, from my understanding, the, let me, let me get this straight. They, the only somebody who can determine anything about traffic is a police officer.
Exactly.
Who's a sworn police officer. I'm not correct now. Uh, uh, nobody else. These people that sit on the board, they can't determine or track, because they're, they're police officers, the only people that is certified to state of Mississippi to do traffic control, I mean, trap, direct trap or whatever trap is coming down, coming down the public street. Am I correct about that? I'm, I'm, I'm just asking, I, I know, like I said, I'm not trying to be argumentative about it, but like I said earlier and I stated to anybody, and some people ain't gonna like what I say and what I do. But I just want to do the right thing. That's all I want to do. These orders that we reading, I can go through them and start chopping them like a brick. So being, because being a former police officer, I'm not just sitting in the dark. I know some of this stuff. And being, and being also, now being on council, I've been around this stuff, some of this stuff since 1976. And I, I know some of this stuff from the old school and now I'm here with the new school.
Alderwoman Irving?
I also want to include everything that he just said in the exception and even the, the exception that the judges stated or allowed them to open on the special exception was that they were only responsible for inside their building and in front of the building. So I do agree with you. But I also wanted to share that I did speak with, uh, the Attorney General's office and I spoke with an attorney. I don't want to call his name. But I shared everything with the special exception, why they were closed, um, and gave them all the information. And hence, Ms. Irving, I love coming to Natchez. Natchez is a beautiful city. I told him about to go cut all of that. He said, Ms. Irving, that has nothing to do with that business. You have a public safety issue. And that's what you're dealing with. So everything that he just stated, the attorney just spoke on all of those things. Every last one he just listed, they've been addressed. They have been addressed, so I'm saying this. As I just said, we're waiting on this community meeting that needs to happen where we can all come together and be each other's keeper. Because that's what needs to happen. This is a police safety issue. In planning, there's a site review committee. That site review committee should consist of what? Police officer, the legal, uh, engineer, everything that's needed. We have six beats in Natchez. How many officers are only that beat during the time we having our nightlife? All these things are to be considered. And so when we look to say we want to close them, we need to address the real issue. And that's the same, and, and, and I love my people in blue. Let me state this first and foremost. I am not here to criticize anyone. What I am going to say is this. We know we need more officers. We know we need more. I applaud you. You put that suit on to get out and protect and serve this community. And I am grateful, eternally grateful. Nobody else would do that but you. That's your sign that God has for you. But we need more. We need more. And we need to, as I stated, and I'm, I'm stating your name to this. We need, this is a public safety issue. This is not Truth Lounge. This is a public safety issue. And we've heard it from everybody that's come here. That's the issue that needs to be addressed. And I know meetings, whether they're monthly or quarterly, we can take care of that. When we met with the downtown master plan in 2018, we had charrettes. We had things that were in favor of. We had some that were not in favor of, but we compromised. And look what we came with, a wonderful plan that we're even going to be recognized with by the end of the week. And it's a part of the downtown master plan. And safety is included in that as well. So I need this board, and I'm asking my colleagues. Open up your heart. Open up your mind and your soul and let's do the right thing. Let's open these doors again. They deserve that. They deserve that. They've been closed since April the 25th. Do we realize the resources that they've lost? Have we considered that? Or did we think they were just gonna go away and wither up and hey, dwindle? And say it's over with for them? Who's next? I don't want that. That's why it takes all of us to come together. We are a team. We are a team. And it's time for us, if Natchez is gonna move forward, how's it going to move forward if government doesn't work together to move it forward? And this is who we are. We are elected by the people to work for the people. And it's up to us to do our due diligence tonight. And to get this vote started. And I'm gonna ask you, everyone, look deeply in your heart and let's open this building up tonight. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, there's a motion before us. Are we ready to call a question? The question has been called. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay. Wow. Tell me why.
The, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, we will have a roll call. Alderwoman Hall?
Tell me why.
I'm, I'm sorry.
No, it's not.
I'm sorry, we, we are in the vote. We need order. Alderwoman Hall?
Nay.
Alderman Frazier?
Uh.
Alderman Smith?
Nay.
Wow.
Alderwoman Irving?
Aye.
Alderman Maroney?
Nay.
The nays have it. The motion is defeated.
Let me say this, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Alderman Frazier.
No, you need to tell me now.
I'm sorry, we, we will have.
I understand.
We will have the forum. We'll have the forum.
I understand, uh, uh.
Yes, Alderman Frazier.
I know, I respect everybody up here. Vote where you want to vote, but, uh, to me, uh, uh, I see where this, it was going from the start. That, uh, one of the Alderwomen are not here. I don't know what, what was his reason for not being here. But, but, uh,
Wow.
I, I think that we just did these things for greatness, sir. I'm just gonna leave it at that and I'm not gonna get into.
It takes everybody to move us forward.
Thank you, Alderman Frazier. Thank you. And we do, yes, Alderwoman Irving.
We can't move forward, Natchez can't move forward. We want to be one Natchez, how do we do it? We, you cannot. Leaving here tonight, I don't want to say this, but this further divides a community. This further divides a community, and that's not what we're here for. We're supposed to do what? We're supposed to come together. You have heard the information, it's been presented. And we will not look in our hearts and you gonna tell me, you gonna talk to me later?
We've had, we've had the vote. We're now, uh, we, we thank, we thank everyone.
We can't move forward like this, right?
We, we thank everyone. And I also want to say this, and I have to say this. A lot of statements were made tonight about our police, but I want our police to know that you have my support. And I have been out there with you at all hours of the day, night, early morning. I've seen you work hard. And I want to say that I appreciate our men and women in blue. And you have, and will continue to have, my full support. We now will move on, uh, we will have our department director's reports. We need order, we need order. While, uh, while everyone's.
Mrs. Megan, um, McKenzie right here. She's right here, um, Attorney Gray.
Mayor, you gonna, I'll be right back. You gonna just spend the week for a minute, are you doing? Okay.
Never seen such a hardy. What do you tell me? What do you tell? It's ridiculous.
Wow.
Sound good? Yeah, I'm thinking with John, man, I think it is. No way.
Yes.
I, I just want to say something.
Alderman Smith, you're recognized.
I want to say something about our police department. I, and there's some of them here and I want to thank them. Some of those nights, and, and I think the sheriff's department was involved some nights, were really scary and very dangerous. And they de-escalated situations instead of using extreme force to remove people. And they handled it and nobody died, nobody was hurt. I'm forever grateful for the way y'all handled some of the things you had to handle with this. Thank you very, very much. And I respect each and every one of y'all. And I get emotional about that because I think y'all were not treated fairly tonight. And I respect our police department and the efforts they're making. Thank you.
It's the mayor.
And the sheriff.
Mr. Mayor. Yes, Alderwoman Hall?
I also like to say, I, I respect every last one of you. And the sheriff is here as well, his department. Your lives are in danger every day. I know what y'all had to go through. I've seen the reports. The planning commission did their job. I, I respect you all. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
So, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Frazier, you wanted to speak and then I will.
Alderwoman Irving?
I just want to say this, um, I, I want to say this because it's something that I pulled with, with our to-go ordinance. The, um, the, um, the leisure and recreation, um, to-go club ordinance. It had said if there was any kind of disturbance, I mean, and, and that is what our, um, law enforcement should do to keep people moving. And I, I got the information right here in front of me.
I'm, I'm sorry, right now, we're on a special call meeting.
And I understand, but I'm still speaking to the issue, Mr. Mayor.
The issue's been settled by both. We now move on. And I, I know there are those who have wanted to say things, but right now, I'm, I'm sorry. It is, uh, it is 7:40. And, and we need to be respectful. We have listened to you and please don't, um, speak to other colleagues in a disrespectful tone.
I'm not in a disrespectful way, Mr. Mayor.
And so let us now move on to our department director's reports. Uh, Alderman Frazier? Yes, uh, just briefly, Alderman.
It's gonna be brief. Let me say this. Uh, me, myself, personally, I would never turn my back on these gentlemen in that police department, that sheriff department. I know what they go to. But, uh, you got to realize that the public, these people in the public, they really don't know policing and what going on. So I respect each and every individual who, who got up there and spoke. And, and like I say, these police officers, and, and I know they do a good job. But what they were saying, they need more resources. Everybody need more resources. Not just the police department, the sheriff's department, everybody need, need more, uh, resource. They're working with what they got. And that's very little what they got. And we, and, and I, I appreciate the sheriff being here, showing his support. And, but like I say, Mr. Mayor, we just need to come together and, and, and get our community together and especially dealing with law enforcement. And I, we need, and traveling, always like punching it, we need to get us a new jail.
Thank you, Alderman Frazier, thank you. Department Director reports, uh, Mr. James Johnson, thank you for your patience. We now recognize you.
Yes, sir. Evening, Mayor and Board. I'll, I'll be brief. Um, you did receive my report, I think, with your packets. Concord Drainage, Concord Avenue Drainage Project, House Bill 603 of the Mississippi Legislature, 2003, regular session. The city's consulting engineer, Jordan Kizer Sessions, is requesting approval of the following change orders. Change order number one, to increase the quantity for removal of asphalt, dollar figure. To increase the quantity of excess excavation, dollar figure. To increase the quantity of geotextile for base, dollar figure. To increase the quantity of crushed stone, dollar figure. To increase the quantity of hot asphalt mix, dollar figure. Total for change order number one, twenty-two thousand, six oh nine and twenty-five cents. You see the amount of original contract as approved by the board. The value of the change order number one, the revised new total for contract. Pleasure to the board.
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Alderwoman Irving, seconded by Alderwoman Hall. Discussion. We'll call for the question. I'm sorry, Alderman Maroney?
Who did the original engineering on this project?
Jordan Kizer Sessions.
And so now they come back and they've got all these change orders. Did they not accurately assess the project in the first place?
Mr. Maroney, but from what I have heard, that they did not include a needed base repair in the original scope of work and we're doing it now. Based on increasing the quantities and the unit costs provided.
So this is, is additional stuff to do?
Yes, sir.
Some additional work, it's not the original.
That is correct on this, yes. Uh, to, to make a base repair to the road, a certain section, yes.
Thank you, thank you, Alderman Maroney. Alderman Frazier?
James, that, uh, uh, that's not including work on this drainage, but that's not including work off, uh, Old Washington Road?
No, sir. This is strictly the Concord Drainage Project. This is not off Old Washington Road, no, sir.
Okay. Okay, great.
We'll call for the question. Call, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next item.
Change order number two, to increase the quantity for bitumen tack coat, uh, dollar figure. To increase the quantity for hot mixed asphalt, dollar figure. Total value change order number two, twenty-one thousand, four twenty-seven. And these quantities were omitted from the plans. Uh, you see the value of the current contract carried over from change order number one by change order number two, total value of contract total for change order. Total value of contract, increasing it by change order number two. And I do want to point out, we are within the monies awarded by the legislature as well. So these are still no local tax dollars. We still have a small balance left.
Thank you. Motion made by Alderwoman Irving.
Second.
Seconded by Alderwoman Hall. Discussion.
Call the question?
Question's been called, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries.
And one more item. Uh, base and asphalt repair for proposed downtown micro-surfacing project. To make needed immediate repairs to our heavily traveled downtown streets and to generate additional bidders for the city's micro-surfacing project staff. Mr. Dollar and myself, along with the mayor, is suggesting pulling out the base and asphalt repair from the micro-surfacing project and allow staff to request a motion to seek bids for only base and asphalt repair at this time.
So move.
Motion made by Alderwoman Irving.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Maroney. Um, we're very grateful to have identified a company that can provide this much needed, uh, uh, service to the city, which will then decrease the amount of work needed for a micro-sell project to take place. And it should make the project more appetizing to contractors. Our goal being to get these streets repaired and smoothed this year rather than waiting until next year.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Alderwoman Hall?
Does this micro-sell project include Homochetta and, um, Canal Streets?
Hold on, hold on. Uh, yes, it does. It does include, uh, Manning Franklin and the cross streets and all of Canal and Homochetta. Yes, ma'am.
All right. Uh, the motion has already been made. Do we have further discussion? We'll call for the question. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Motion carries.
And the final item, I think we're going to hold off until then another board meeting, that being Morgantown Road.
We're, we're getting very close, but we are having some challenges. Obviously, this is a project with a lot of detail to it. And the city and the county having to work together. We hope that we, we thought we were going to be ready for our decision tonight. But we, we need to make sure one other detail is taken care of. So just bear with us. We're close, closer than ever.
With the money, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes, Alderman.
So you're working to negotiate cost or?
Just details related to the project and, and making sure that it does come within the amount that has been budgeted and that we can legally award. Thank you. The good news is it still is within the negotiable range. We're just working to get that final negotiable range resolved. Chief Robert Arrington, we're recognizing you now at this time.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Okay, so I am here again to propose a deal with the county for our fire agreement as well as our 911 agreement. You should have this in your packets. We went about it a little different this time. We just took the average salaries of the employees in question, the 911 employees, multiplied it by the number of 911 employees the city pays for. So we are currently paying two-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand, four-hundred-and-four dollars. The new calculations would bring that up to four-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand, twenty-six dollars and forty cents, which is an increase of one-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars. That is just for the 911 portion of it. The city will pay for 10 dispatchers' salary and fringe, all of that. And the fire protection, using the same base formula for the county. They currently pay seven-hundred-and-one thousand, six-hundred-and-three dollars. Doing those same calculations for 16 firefighters would increase it to nine-thousand, I'm sorry, nine-hundred-eighty-nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars and twenty-four cents, which for them would be an increase of two-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand, three-hundred-and-nineteen dollars and twenty-four cents. So we just tried to keep it as even as possible, doing, doing those calculations for both sides and coming up with those figures for employees' salaries and fringe.
Was a pleasure of the Board. So moved. Motion made by Alderman Hall, seconded by Alderman Irving. I do want to say that I have had discussions with Supervisor Wilson, Supervisor Gray, Supervisor Hutchins, and also Supervisor Gaines. And I've had texting back and forth with Supervisor Middleton. They all have these figures. I've received positive comments. But they have said, and I think it's reasonable, that our firefighters have received during this administration two raises. But they believe that they are still having issues hiring dispatchers because their salaries have not been keeping up. And I would expect that they may make a counter offer to us, asking that we do factor in some for a raise for dispatchers. I want that just to be known. Obviously, we don't know what those figures are yet, but I would say I think we're closer than we have been.
Yes, sir.
And I thank you, Chief Arrington, for all of your work. Chief Green is not here, but she has been involved in this, providing figures, helping us. And also, Madam Clerk, Megan McKenzie, you've been very helpful. I know we've been back and forth. And I know the public's been waiting for us to get this done. And it has been proposed that we have a joint meeting, but we just didn't feel like we needed to have a joint meeting until we had gotten closer and having things ironed out. You don't want to just get into a meeting and have a standoff because we're so far apart. I'm encouraged that now we are moving to a place where we are closer together. And I want everyone to bear in mind, this is, in addition to, a grant that the county allowed us to receive through the state fire marshal of ninety thousand dollars that has allowed us now to purchase a new pumper truck. Alderman Davis is out of town, but he has expressed his support of this. And Alderman Smith, I believe you have expressed your support. So I wanted to add those comments. Do we have any further discussion?
I want to thank Chief Arrington and Madam Clerk. They have proposed more than one, brought more than one proposal to us. They've been working hard on this diligently, and it's time for us to get it done. This has been going on too long, and he's worked hard, and so has Madam Clerk. It's time to get it done.
That's right. Thank you. Alderman Frazier, yes, sir.
Let me just say this. The E-911 dispatch is, to get this new proposal done, I think is, is much needed. But here's the thing, these ladies and gentlemen are under a lot of stress, and it's hard to retain some of, keep some of these good peoples. And from my understanding, the people down there, most of the people down there have been down there a long time. Am I correct?
We still have a few that are seasoned people, but they've, they've been having decent turnover, so there, there are some fairly new people down there.
In order to, in order to keep these people, we got to pay them. We got to pay them. That's, that's my own comment, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Frazier, and I agree with you. I do. And I think if we pass this tonight, it'll put us that much closer, and then the county can provide us some more detail. And hopefully by our next meeting, we'll have it resolved. And so I'm, I'm very encouraged. And also encouraged that we can continue working together. Because that obviously, I think, is in the best interest of everyone.
Absolutely.
Call the question.
The question's been called. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you.
I failed to also mention Richard Burke out of sight, out of mind, right? But Mr. Burke, I know is listening online, and I want him to know, we appreciate the work he has done. And I see you smiling, Lee. You know what I mean. City official reports. Bear in mind, this is a special meeting. We can't, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, and have a good evening. We, we can't make any motions other, other than just giving our gen, you know, generic reports.
I don't think we ever make a motion on our reports, Mr. Mayor.
I just am reminding everyone, this is a special call meeting. Alderman Hall?
I'm just going to report for Alderman Davis. He's asked me to read a statement from Saturday, Father's Day weekend, June 15th, for Fishing with Fathers. "It is a pleasure to see the kids and family members enjoy themselves." I think Lee has some pictures from that as well for us from Saturday. We had Alderman Davis, since we had a total of about a hundred kids there this weekend, and we're very pleased. "It's a pleasure to see the kids and family members enjoy themselves, and the event is growing every year. A special thanks to the city of Natchez, Home Bank, Delta Bank, Parks and Recreation, Natchez Transit, Alderman Hall, Rodrick Green, who did an awesome job grilling, Game Wardens, Willie Wesley, and Gregory Washington, and the transit driver Raymond McDonald. And he's looking forward to next year." So it was a great turnout, and we're very, very pleased. And each year it has grown, so. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Thank you. Alderman Frazier?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Lee.
I just want to say, and I think I reported this once before, on Martin Luther King and Minor Street there, about the club, this street that started buckling as the weather started getting better, it's going to get worse and worse. The county, the cause, that county, it dipped. Man, let me say this too. Tonight's vote was, you know, I respect each individual the way they voted, but it was very disheartening. And, and it's just me, I'm just going to say this. I think that we are driving a witch in, in our community. I hate to get into this, but that we, we look, look at this though, like I say, and like I said, I talk to a lot of my constituents, and they stay talking about this is a black and white. As I stated earlier in one of my reports, we don't need that. So I, I say this to, to my colleagues, that let's try to work together and get things done. Let's not, you know, do all this bitching that we've been doing. It's a new year coming up, July 1st, everybody don't get sworn in. And I say that, I'm going to try to work with each and every individual up here. But, you know, I have my own ways, and I, like I say, I, and I respect each, everybody votes. Sometime I vote, vote with you, but sometime I don't. But like, like I say, let's still respect each other. I'm going to respect you, you respect me. You don't want to respect me, I damn sure ain't going to respect you. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Frazier. And I am looking forward to the next year and working with you. Alderman Smith?
I have no report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Irving?
Yes, sir. I just want to begin with making an announcement. The Mississippi Food Network Global Food Pantry will take place at Macedonia Baptist Church, 33 Modesty, June the 21st. Time to be announced. I will come back on Facebook and make that announcement again. Again, I just want to put out that Mississippi Food Network Global Food Pantry will take place at Macedonia Baptist Church, 33 Modesty, Friday, June 21st, 2024. And time will be announced. And that is my report, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Alderman Maroney?
No report.
Okay. Thank you. We will then go now to the city clerk.
Okay, well, they sped through and didn't even give me time to finish writing their reports. I only have a couple of things myself. The first item is request for approval of the second, June 2024, claims docket.
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Maroney. Discussion.
Call the question.
Question's been called. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item.
Next item is request for approval of the second, June 2024, mini claims docket.
Was a pleasure of the Board. Motion made by Alderman Smith.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Hall. Discussion. We'll call for the question. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next item.
Final item, and this may be a little repetitive. I believe some of these approvals were handled a couple months ago, but we just want to make sure we had everyone included. So a request for approval of travel for Dan Gibson, Valencia Hall.
I'm sorry. Excuse me, I'm sorry. My fault, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you, please continue.
Billy Joe Frazier, Sarah Carter Smith, Valencia, oh, I'm sorry, Felicia Irving, Ben Davis, Curtis Maroney, Megan McKenzie, Denise Bell, Rebecca Turner, Ryan Porter, and Frankie Lago to attend, and I'm sorry, we also need to add Police Chief Cal Green and Fire Chief Robert Arrington to this list, to attend the annual MML conference in Biloxi, will be from June 23rd through June 27th, 2024.
So moved. Alderman Hall has made the motion. Seconded by Alderman Maroney. Discussion. We'll call for the question. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next item. Yes, Alderman.
If I may, and I just want to, just to say this, no less, at our last meeting that we had, I mentioned about us preparing for our budget season. So I just wanted to ask, we didn't have anything on our claims docket or any information? I asked for a calendar, work session, you know, this is June, this is our last month.
I, I actually sent out the request to the different departments a month ago, asked that they be turned back in to me Wednesday of last week. I have at this point received four budgets, four departments requests. I am working on the master spreadsheet so that we can get a first draft out to everyone. I will not even receive our ad valorem paperwork from the county until July to know what our upcoming assessed valuations will be and what kind of ad valorem collections we are looking at for fiscal year 2025. So we are on track, and as soon as that information starts coming together and I have something to provide, that will be provided.
Will we be able to hear them, meet with them as well? That's what I'm asking in our budget session.
I mean, we, we have budget sessions, work sessions every year. If y'all want to bring each of the department heads in, then y'all will make that vote.
We will be having those work sessions later in July. Yes, Alderman.
It will be a special call to discuss the budget later. If they want to go in your meeting with the department head, they can. But there is no reason for us to come up here every night to hear their requests.
We've done it in the past.
We come into play when we're trying to negotiate at the end and figure out where we're going to cut and where we're not going to cut.
That's correct. But we'll have more discussion on that. Obviously, we'll get more into our budget process in July and especially during Alderman.
I just don't want it to be pushed.
Mr. Mayor, I remind us, this is a special call meeting.
I understand. Thank you. We now will call the city attorney. Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We've been working diligently on the Natchez Humane Society Management Agreement. As the Board is aware, we've already approved the lease agreement, but this is the management agreement. We're anxious to get it done. I apologize because I don't think the management agreement is in the packets tonight. We had a few last minute changes, and it looks like we may have a couple of other changes. But I want the Board to be aware that we're asking approval for the agreement between the city of Natchez and the Natchez Humane Society.
Okay. I do believe the Alderman, Alderwoman will need to have a copy of that agreement.
I have it here, but it's just on.
In their packets. And, and we will have to vote on this at our next meeting.
Mr. Mayor, is this the packet we had in our last meeting? That's the same packet?
We have not had this agreement.
It's been changed.
Okay.
Yes, Alderman Irving?
I just got a question to ask, and maybe you all answered. We were at the neighborhood watch meeting just last, well, Tuesday, a week ago. And so one of the questions that were asked, how many with us making an expansion to keeping our animals in a safe space? Do we know the amount of, because that was one of the questions that was asked. Yeah, we didn't know the answer. So do we have a roundabout figure of how many animals will be? Because that was a question that was really concerning.
It will be a revolving amount of anywhere from 20 to 30 at a given time, and they are not for adoption. Those will be work, will be working in our agreement with Natchez Spay Neuter to transport those for adoption throughout other areas of the country. And also to provide those that are deemed locally adoptable to the Humane Society. The Humane Society will continue to be the main source for making adoptions. And the goal is that those animals kept at this new facility will be transported quickly by way of our agreement with Spay Neuter. And Natchez Spay Neuter actually has provided a very good report indicating, I'm sorry. I said Natchez Spay Neuter. We are working with them, but I should be saying Hoopie, Paw Print, Animal Rescue. And they, we have another report that was provided last month to you. They are the ones transporting those animals. We hope that it may eventually be more, but we don't want to overwhelm our small staff at first.
But that was just a concern that they had, so I wanted to bring it up.
Very good, very good. What, what I'd like to do is make sure, because we, we need to make sure we catch up and resume our monthly allotment that we make to the Humane Society. And so we need to get this agreement adopted as soon as possible.
Agreed.
And so we'll, we'll get that done. If you could, Mr. Lazarus, email a copy of that agreement. All the Alderman, we'll also print out copies for the packets for the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. We had to add an item today. The Board of Supervisors yesterday passed a motion that would allow the use of law enforcement at the pool. This says deputies, it's actually sheriff and police, to provide security at the pool during regular hours, and also for special events at the expense of those who are renting the pool for special events. And then this cost will be split between the city and the county. The board saw reason to vote on this unanimously and have now asked us to also do the same. And I would like.
What about hours?
So moved. During pool hours, at least one officer will be present from now on.
Mr. Mayor, can we have a vote and then discussion?
Yes, Alderman Hall has made the motion.
Seconded.
There's a second by Alderman Irving. Discussion.
I'm just asking, what are the hours of the pool?
The hours of the pool are generally 12 noon or 1:00. I don't have that in front of me.
To what, 7:00 or 8:00?
I don't have that in front of me.
You don't have the hours? I was just looking at the amount of hours that they would be out there.
So what we're saying is, our society has degraded to the point that we have to have a police officer or a sheriff's deputy in the public pool during all hours since pool is open? Is that what? Is that what society?
They have, they have requested that we have security there, yes.
We just had a discussion about it.
Yes. We have been, it has been requested that we have security there. And in the event of any incident, I would not want the city to have gone on record not supporting the request.
Wow. Okay. I just want to make sure I understood what we were talking about.
And it was brought up last year.
It was brought up last year, voted on last year. If I'm not mistaken, I could be wrong, it was brought up by Ms. Hall, that it gets secured. So this, this is nothing new.
And it was recommended by me last year, Alderman Frazier.
No, we're correct.
Further discussion?
Call the question.
The question's been called. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Just brief updates. I want to say we've had a very successful run of Juneteenth activities. They've been well-reported in the paper. The, the visit of the U.S. Colored Troops Reenactors was a highlight for me personally last Thursday. It was wonderful to see them here, and they appreciated greatly the reception they were given. But also, all of the events have been great. Really enjoyed the kickback at Napack moment on Thursday evening, and celebrating so many accomplishments through, throughout our community. We also want to say WJTV had a fantastic time of it here Friday. We received a lot of support from the community, and it just couldn't have gone any better. Also, the concert, the Fishing with Fathers, the choir event at Pilgrim Baptist on Sunday, really great events. And our Day of Unity, and Reverend Clifton Marvel, he said it so eloquently, "Let's stay together." The hand can work independently through its fingers, but it's still the hand, and we have to work that way. Yes, we may not always agree, and we may go this way or that, but ultimately, let's stay together. We are all one Natchez. I also want to say that Friday night, it was really special to attend Miss Sabrina Bartley's retirement party. It was an elegant, beautiful event, and we congratulate her again. And we are very grateful to Carla Monroe, who stepped in to be interim director of the senior center, Mr. Lewis Davis, who is the interim director for now at Natchez Transit. We also want to remind everyone that tomorrow is Juneteenth, and it is a time for us as a community to reflect upon what that means for a city like Natchez. And it is so true that this city would not be a city were it not for the sacrifices of those enslaved Africans who built this city. And tomorrow, we honor them in a special way at 7:30 at Melrose, an luminary event that will last until 9:30, and we encourage everyone to participate in this really solemn occasion in giving thanks to those ancestors of the majority of our citizens who, to this day, we should owe our thanks and gratitude. Also, don't forget July 1st is our inauguration. It will be at 12 noon at the convention center, and immediately following that, after lunch, we will have our first board meeting. It will be conducted at 3:00 PM here in this chamber. And then during that evening, from 6:00 to 8:00, Monday, July 1st, Rolling River Reloaded, we will have an inaugural gala, free and open to everyone, celebrating all of us and featuring the music of YZ Ewing. So we have some great things to look forward to. That concludes my report. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Irving, seconded by Alderman Maroney. Discussion. We'll call for the question. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you so much.